Welcome all the visitors here today. We will get started by standing in sacred place of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you today. Bless you all for an allotment, tell me Lord, to come in this place to conduct governmental business. Father, we pray, Lord, that you guide us, protect us, Lord God. Send your word that who would direct you in all our ways, you would direct our path. Now, we pray for your direction as we discuss Dillon County's government and take on the issues of the people. You said, Father, that they that rule, oh man, must be just. We pray for justice alone, this being today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We're down to number three, men of approval, ten to the willful motion to approve this thing.
I make a motion.
Any discussion?
I say.
I want to favor raise your right hand. As I know, the whole approval of minutes of two twenty-five sixteen, we have a motion to approve of the minutes.
I make a motion.
This is the second?
Second.
Any discussion? I want to favor raise your right hand. We have the number five, Huggsy here, A, in order to develop a joint county industrial and business park in conjunction with Marlboro County, South Carolina, pursuant to Article eight, section thirteen of the South Carolina Constitution and South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy-six, four one dash one seventy, it's secreted as a medium to provide for a written agreement with Marlboro County to develop the park and other matters related thereto.
Not for that one.
Okay. Then, uh, then B, in order as far as installment payments of real property taxes, anybody?
Charles Scott.
Charles Scott.
Can I turn this around?
Yeah.
Makes you more comfortable when you hide behind something. Mr. Chairman, County Council, Administrator, and that third, both of you in your respective places. I want to say, Mr. Chairman, that the last time I was here, about nine months ago, in a similar situation, uh, which we know was the third reading on the law, and it's been passed, uh, and I was here to speak against that reading. If you recall, that was about raising our taxes to me. Uh, and as you know, that reading passed on the fourth free vote. But when I received my tax notice from the treasurer's office, my taxes increased total five meters instead of two. Uh, we take for about fourteen buttons, but it's not much. Uh, but through obstaculation, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make an example of raising taxes, that I use these clothes in my vegetable garden, and before you, our taxes were raised, I paid a dollar forty-nine cents for them, and I bought some last week, and it cost me a dollar ninety-nine. And I don't know if that was from the results of the tax increase, it's just a coincidence that may have happened. Um, but that's, I know that's how business works on a tax increase, is they simply don't pay a tax, they just add it to the cost of doing business, and they just pass it on to consumer. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the strangest thing that came out of that meeting, and it was about a week to ten days later, I received an anonymous letter from somebody, in my opinion, might be in his room, I don't know, but it was a sign, but it says, Dear Mr. Scott, please do yourself a favor and stay off the camera discussing Dillon County business. Just what qualifications do you have telling the majority of County Council what is best for Dillon County? Just because you're trying to stand up doesn't mean you need to make a fool out of yourself. And, Mr. Chairman, that, that don't bother me, I mean, I didn't, if it bothered me, I would address it nine months ago, but that's, that's in the terrible need, that's just something that, that doesn't bother me, but I did want to mention it too. But what we're here today for, Mr. Chairman, is the prepaid plan on property tax, and it must be a very important issue, uh, to the county and to the citizens of this county, because it hit the front page of our local paper on, uh, March 8th. State and County Council passes two readings of real property tax, prepay installment plan. Now, what's interesting to me, when I read this, was it kind of reminded me of a maintenance man I had back in the nineties, when I called on him to do something, to repair a machine or something, he could give me more reasons why not to do something, why to fix it, and to go ahead and fix it. And I think this article is kind of the same situation, that I can see more reasons why not to fix, uh, or take care of this problem than go ahead and do it. And the other thing, I, I, I could talk to you thirty minutes on this, well, I'm a, I'm just commenting on the editorial about this stuff. Uh, says, "The fact is that people who would really need to be able to pay their taxes in installments would not qualify for this program." I mean, that's something that, that I, I can't comprehend, you know, the people that would qualify, uh, or who need to pay would not qualify. Uh, like, there was something later on that can kind of explain that, I think. But then it says, "Those who qualify will repay their taxes, or prepay their taxes for the coming year on an estimated basis." Uh, this is not a postpaid situation. I mean, that's common sense, you don't prepay something that you're delinquent on. I mean, that's, that's, I don't see why that would have any, any part of this, that when you're prepaying something, it's something that's due ahead of time, and if you're past due, you can't prepay on something that's already past due. I mean, that's, that's, I, I don't know. And, uh, says you will not receive a tax bill and then start making payments. Uh, that's true too. I mean, you receive a tax bill, and then you pay your taxes, but before you receive your father's tax bill, you, you, in this program, you're, you're allowed to prepay for the next tax bill. So, that makes it a prepaid plan. And here's something that I think's really important for it. This is for real property. You cannot pay your vehicle taxes and installments. This does not apply to mobile homes unless they are detached and parked from the real estate and established as a residence. Well, I'm sure that they might, and Harold has told that this is generally not the case with most mobile homes, but I'm sure that. Everybody does not probably do that, but I'm sure there's some people out there that detail their home and establish it as a residence where they can, they can pay, uh, or be qualified for this program. Uh, I don't, I don't know what that purpose is. Uh, it does not apply to homeowners with a mortgage and an escrow account. That's true. Uh, that's based on the lending institution where they loan you money. Normally, they put your taxes and insurance in an escrow account, which is essentially prepaying your taxes. Uh, they're not, uh, collecting your money for your last taxes, they're collecting your money for your, for your future taxes. And this is what the prepaid plan, kind of copies of an escrow account at the bank, that you are having option to prepay your taxes. Uh, so, so, uh, it's, it's true that someone in a, uh, in a mortgage agreement with a bank, uh, wouldn't qualify because of this situation. Here's what I don't understand, uh, Mr. Chairman, people who are delinquent on their taxes cannot participate, which that's common sense, I mean, we've, we've already established that. But it says, "If one misses a payment, the county can refuse to let that person be on the plan." Now, here's what I, I can't comprehend is, is, you know, if I owe a thousand dollars taxes on January fifteenth, and I line them up, two hundred dollars pay plan, and I pay you four hundred dollars in the first two plans, and I split the third one, uh, essentially, it sounds to me like you're gonna give me my money back and say, "Pay them when you can." I mean, that's kind of what that sounds like to me, that, that. It, I don't think it'd be wise if you got money on hand to give it back to somebody and make it hard for all the fathers and, uh, when the due date is. Just keep the money in a, in a escrow account and save it until that person comes back up. Uh, here's, here's something, you know, software would have to be purchased at a cost of eighty-eight hundred bucks. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I understand there's a cost involved in here, but you're providing a service for the people of this county. You know, there's a cost, you don't make money. The government doesn't make money on everything that they, they do, they're providing a service. Uh, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, do you make money in our departments? I mean, if you do, I don't, that might be good, I don't know, but, uh, but this is in here to kind of throw the people's mind against the program, is, you know, there's a cost involved, so, so you shouldn't do it. And another thing, you know, it says, uh, you don't know whether the treasurer's office, tax, social affairs office have had to hire additional staff to operate the program. And then, three lines down, it says, "This ordinance is not going to help many people." So, it's not going to help many people, I would even think about having to hire people to do this job. I mean, it kind of contradicts the system. Uh, another thing, you know, the, the finance director saying it wouldn't be enough interest collecting from, from holding the installment payments, uh, in other words, you will never recruit your money on the cost of the program, maybe that's what it says, but like I said, that's providing a service and, and, uh, recruiting your money, I don't know if that's a big issue or not. But one thing I want to, this is the last thing I'll say about this, is, I agree with, when County Treasurer made her statement in a conference call, apparently they had, says, "A tax quote, taxpayer dollars are to be used for any program, it should be available to all." Now, that reminds me of that tax increase y'all gave us last year, and it was earmarked for a specific group, so, therefore, it didn't provide something for everybody, all the taxpayers. So, that's another contradiction within itself. But, uh, the other thing I want to say, I, I, truthfully, I think it would help the poor people and the small business of this county that who want to provide, they don't have to, want to get in, but don't, it's an option that they would have, whether to get in or not, but it's a service that you could provide that would make it available, and they would have that option. And, uh, I know there was a comment made on this editorial, Dillon County Council needs to seriously rethink this ordinance and this issue. Now, last thing I'll say is, if you were planning to vote against this ordinance, uh, I agree with this editorial that you might want to rethink, that's all I can say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to number six now, you bidding, recreation concession fee, real bills.
Uh, we've got several bids. We've got Randy McCollum, he bid sixteen hundred dollars. Bibleweight Church, he bid fifteen hundred dollars. Eastern Regional Softball League, bid twenty-five hundred. And Shalom Bright, uh, bid at three thousand dollars.
Is that over yet?
Yes, uh-huh. There's four bids.
I guess the party most relevant motion is to have one of these.
It does, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we accept Mr. Bright's three thousand dollar bid.
Here we have a motion, is this second?
I say.
Any discussion? I want to favor raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to six B, agreement with Dillon County Sheriff's Department and the town of Lakeview.
Mr. Chairman, we've got sheriff here too, and we're gonna make a few comments. It's just an agreement with the town of Lakeview to, uh, for us to work with them, provide fitness assistance through them, uh, they get about ten thousand years, I don't know, you can stand up. They were determined to pay us, reimburse us back, which would more than cover our costs to provide service to them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. They've been talking with me for several months, and they're gonna lose their victims' advocate money if they don't put something in place, and the counterpart in Columbia, the auditor there suggested that they contract with the county to get the services they need, and that way, they could give us money year by year, just be one year at a time, but when they brought me the contract, I want you to be on board with it, and obviously, if you so desire, the administrator needs to sign along with myself. We can certainly do that, that's what's happening all over the state, and if we solve Lakeview some problems, they would have a part-time person that would meet their need, and we would benefit from it at no cost to our people.
You can do it right now.
Mr. Chairman, I did talk to Alan Bear, he's our county attorney, he said he didn't have a problem with the agreement either, so he and I both read it, the sheriff read it, we didn't see any issue with it.
Second. Only favor raise your right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're down to C, Recreation Request.
Okay, the first one we have is, um, Neighbor's Helping Neighbors is requesting any assistance that the council may give.
I make a motion to give two thousand dollars like we did last year.
Second.
That one's in the general fund?
Only favor raise your right hand.
Okay, the next one is, um, from Dillon District Four, they're having their nineteenth annual spring games, and it's for the students and the programs for exceptional children, which is ages three to twenty-one. Um, y'all want to do this out of your recreation accounts?
I give a hundred out of my recreation account.
I give a hundred out of mine as well. I got two. Don't have a choice.
Seven five.
I'll do a hundred, sir. I'll bring a check every Mar Jameson.
All right, the next one is, um, Antonio Bolt, he is asking for donation with the help for travel, food, and other expenses, and he coaches ten and under AAU travel basketball team.
Mr. Schilling, if I may, I have a question on that. Yeah, Mr. Bolt talked to me personally about that, and I think he brought some letters over to the council, and he's working with a group of young men with AAU, and I think he's doing a good job, and he asked me to express to them that, that would they help him as much as they could. With that being said, I'd like to give him, I know how he is working with young people, especially, you got to travel down the road with him, and you won't have many, many finances that can be done.
Seven five.
Okay, and the next one is the, um, Relay for Life, and we have two here. Um, one is from Melissa Thompson, and, um, she's asking for whatever donation y'all can get, and then we have one from Janet Pathay from the city, so...
I'd like to put a motion, we give Melissa's team two thousand dollars like City's giving Janet, would be a corporate sponsor. I won't talk about the workshop, nobody's got a corporate sponsor.
Did we give Police Agreed?
Yeah, we did, Police Agreed, yeah.
Two thousand?
Yes, we got a motion, is this second?
Second.
Okay, and the last one, we only have two more. Um, this one is from Lakeview High School, that they want four hundred dollars to, um, participate in the Bowen, South Carolina's Dream Winners Program on April thirteenth, twenty sixteen.
I think last time we gave, what, three hundred out of General Fund?
Yeah, I told you, approved three hundred last time.
Three hundred, general fund. You give him a hundred, Mr. Bobby?
I'm gonna give him a hundred out of my account, but I thought the county approved.
You want to make that a motion?
I want to make that a full motion.
How much you want to give, Mr. Bobby?
They want me to give four hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion if we give him four hundred out of General Fund, and then Mr. Bobby wants to give him a hundred.
Yeah, I give him a hundred out of Referees. If I got anything to say, let me know.
Is the motion, is this second?
I say.
Any discussion? I want to favor raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to number seven, Old Kids.
We're not through yet, Mr. Bobby, can you help? Harold Moody, um, fate, you ask for a hundred dollars out of your recreation for Relay for Life? Okay, I think that's the last one, so do I, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is this second? I want to favor raise your right hand. All of them. Okay, then we have number seven, Old Kids, Dillon County Accommodation Tax Report, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, if it's proper this time, I would like to make a recommendation, in addition to the, uh, accommodation tax, we've talked, last week, we've had extensive conversation with a group of people who came in and they showed their concerns about the accommodation tax, and I just want to add to it that we would approve, along with the accommodation tax, the, um, giving the Criterion Club five thousand dollars, along with Dillon's historical school advisory account, and also give them five thousand dollars.
There you go. Just that motion.
That's a motion, sir.
Is this second? Any discussion?
I, I have one question. I may be mistaken, but I thought the Criterion Club requested three thousand dollars.
Well, after the meeting, Randy talked about it at five.
This letter comes in a request for donation of three thousand.
Yeah, but I wasn't made aware that they request for three. I just wanted that out there for information.
Randy talked about that at the meeting, but you agree on that.
I thought, pardon me, you said, we couldn't do that, I thought you were, you were...
He did, told him about that twenty-five thousand.
But even he didn't have the concrete, because he stood up in his presentation and said that, he talked with oversight committee, the oversight committee said that they can only issue an opinion at that high level, whatever council would do, that pretty much be it.
We got a motion, is this second? Any more discussion? Only favor raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to seven B, Golden Park, another day.
Mr. Chairman, I got this Miller here, she can help to work with, uh, this to go into myself, so I can get this project going, and we got, she got it written down for you. You want to explain it?
Pass down this, um, this is kind of a layman of it. Um, we're receiving twelve thousand dollars for grant money, and Shaker Foundation is giving us forty-six thousand. The prep work, we're gonna, the county's gonna do the prep work. The playground equipment is gonna cost thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents, and they're also going to, um, the playground company's gonna do the ground cover, which is gonna be three thousand, thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. We're gonna put a fence up, which is gonna be fifty-three feet by fifty-three feet around the playground equipment. It's only gonna be four foot high, and we've got an estimate of twenty-five hundred dollars for that. The walking path, the cement labor and the plumbing up, it's gonna be nineteen thousand, five hundred. The lights, we're, we're gonna have Duke Energy put some lights up for us, approximately six is what we're looking at, and that'll be a monthly fee. And then we're gonna get two eight-foot benches for parents to sit on while they're watching their kids play, and that's gonna cost seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. So, right now, the... Do a total, total give up. No. Yeah, um, we, right now, it looks like it's gonna cost about fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents to do all of this work at Gordon Park, which leads one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents that the county will have to put in.
What do you want it to happen with? What county got to put in? Thirteen hundred dollars?
Thirteen hundred, twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
And really, the only thing you need to do is get, is, is to let, I think you got a GSA contract out right there.
We did.
On the contract on the equipment, so the other, all the other fencing, the concrete path, all be fed out separately through our procurement policy, but the playground equipment, we've got a GSA contract.
And I attach that, it is a GSA, it's a federal contract, and we can use federal contracts. contracts.
And who do you say will go do the groundwork?
Um, roads and bridges will do just the cleaning up, you, you, there's not much prep work for it, it's just kinda cleaning it up and leveling it out a little bit.
We got old enough big roads yet.
Let's get these estimates from already, somebody put those in, already got estimates on?
Yes, um, Vernon Greensland got me the estimates for the fencing and the walking path.
We just kinda estimate them.
Six foot, long time, six foot, man.
Would be six foot wide walk?
Yes. And so, that is great.
Do we have a motion, uh, only to Gordon Park update and proposal?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, put out there one time.
Is it so?
I say.
Okay, any more discussion? Only favor raised right hand. We're down to number eight, finance report.
Okay, this is finance report, as of the end of February, um, currently, we got, we have five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars more of revenues than we had in expenses so far through this year. Uh, I guess we're kinda getting in the middle of starting a new budget, so we're gonna keep your prices up.
I knew, Mr. Chair, you're talking about this report, you and Mr. Gaddy.
No, this was, just brought through revenue and expenditure, uh, far, so far this year, starting July first.
Corporate for this report.
That's come from James Estes.
Clay, can you explain this, I know Mr. Gaddy has been, that's why I have to ask you, he's a newcomer. Used to, when I saw this report, it was shocking to me, it's still, it was confusing, very confusing from day one, and it's very confusing now, uh, leaving, because it used to say the other people's money is an extra on these accounts, it doesn't say that.
Let me finish, sir.
It doesn't say that anymore, so can you explain to me what's the difference now? I mean, is this our money, or is this still other people's money, or, I mean, I just don't know.
The funds that we've got, based on the way I look at it, the funds, this is Dillon County's funds that remain left, based on general fund, CDBIs, savings BIs, uh, which leaves seven million, and, uh, I guess capital deposits and true behavior, which should be other, other people's money, so technically, I guess, the way I read it is the four million, three thirty-one is what we have left in the bank.
And the way I read it, it's tied up with other people's money in it too, right?
Well, the way I read it is basically the, the, the four, the four million, three thirty-one is the funds left over after everybody else should receive their money, would be our, that would be our money.
I would be four million, isn't it?
That's the way I read it, that's the way I interpret it.
Very hard for me to read, thank you, though.
Sheriff, would I be a pro, are we talking about this financial report? How much trouble would it be for council to get the administrator right, the treasurer to ask that, to start a ten-hour meeting, or Mr. Gaddy, he can't get a hold of the finances and stuff, if he's written a letter and asked her to.
I didn't think Richard had any problems, you had any problems, Richard, getting information for?
No, I, I'm, you, you're general ledger.
Let's make this clear, from your office, can you see the bank statements, or can you see online banking from your office?
It came from his office, but he can walk next door and tell me.
Next door, three blocks away, that make a point. Well, I'm just saying, if that's the case, how about all these other pauses in place? If the department head don't want to see it, you mean council will turn around and let them change it? Rogue Green's got pause, we need to change, let the cap, let the department head change it?
She, she, she is, um, the treasurer, she's elected, that's her decision, I don't think we dictate her what she got to do.
I think, but we as a governing body could at least ask her to come to our meetings. I mean, Mr. Gaddy can't tell you nothing about the finances, I think at least ask, I mean, I'd be willing to ask, would you be willing to ask her to come?
Really, we can't ask her, so, I say, if we can't vote, we can ask.
Well, we can ask, that way she can, sorry, she wants to come or not. Would you be willing to ask her to come, Clay?
Glad to ask her.
Mr. Chairman, could I make one comment that I don't want to ride in on what y'all are talking about, but I, I do have some concerns. You know, the only concerns I have, Mr. Young, and I've had that since I was elected to this council back in two thousand and eight, the problem that I have, and I still have, is that we're spending money and we don't know where we're at. We don't have nothing concrete, we're sitting up here, we're studying spending money, we don't have anything concrete to tell us where, what's the, what's the balance, where the money's at, and what we got. It's like a while ago, we act like we were stepping on eggs when we were passing some of this stuff, so to speak, uh, do we got the money? You know, we always have asked, do we got the money? So, we, we do need some true reading or something a little more authentic than what we're getting here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming in.
Sheriff, may I ask Mr. Gaddy a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Gaddy, are we having any trouble paying our bills?
No, sir.
When you pick up the telephone and call this Estes, are you having any difficulty finding out how much money we have in the bank?
No, sir. I use, use general ledgers, gives pretty good.
But what I'm trying to say, are you having any difficulty really finding out whether we're solid or not, and whether, if you have any problem with communications with the treasurer?
No, sir.
Does she impede you from doing your job in any way, sir?
No, sir. We, we get off with it.
Okay, well, I, I really, when I have, uh, when I can walk over there and she will show me the bank statements and she showed me everything, me personally, I can't speak for the other six councils, I mean, I have been able to go over and she would show me the bank accounts, accounts, 'cause there is no one, I don't think there is, if there is, I've really been misled, but I haven't had any difficulty finding out the financial information. Now, I can't, I can't walk in this office and pick up the sheet, I'm sure Mr. Young could probably do it, or call her, get it, but anyhow, I personally haven't had any problem, maybe some of the rest have, but I haven't. Okay, apparently you have it either, if you're telling me, if I'm hearing you correctly, that you're not having any trouble doing your job under the system that we currently have operating?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to do, thank you.
Last discussion, gotta comment, gotta comment, you know, and what Council Moody said may be fair, but my thing is if she can show it to him, why don't she just bring him to show it to all of us? And two, as a council member, how can we sit here and say that we are good stewards of the taxpayer's dollar when we don't know what's going on financially? I mean, I'm just walking over to somebody that's in office behind closed doors, looking at something that it should be public information anyhow, is, is taxpayer's dollar. Why should I go behind closed doors and look, look at what, look at the taxpayer's money? That don't make sense, if she can show it tomorrow, it wouldn't make sense, go ahead and just get, and just show it to all of us.
What, what would be wrong with it, Ricky's the finance director, making fifty-five miles a year, what would be wrong with him being able to see that? I mean, pulling up from his computer, online banking, what would be wrong with it? I mean, what would, would that have gotten law for him to look at?
There's a, I think she controls the issue of that, based on state law, I think you need to, need to be careful about what you, what you can do, what you can do.
She ain't been to a council meeting over a year.
Sorry, she's not required.
She's a elected official, she can do what you want to, she don't have.
We don't have, we don't have. We're supposed to make the policies for the county.
Here's the thing, Robin, we may need to rest after this, until we get four council members that'll say, let's go to court, let the court tell us, let a judge tell us whether or not we entitled to that information, we're not gonna get to the bottom of this, and I rest, Mr. Chair, here, back here.
Any more discussion? Okay, we're down to number seven, community report, now a building committee, new building, or the health.
Sheriff, we, uh, we met with some representatives from the, uh, from DHEC, the certain health department, and I think we've got, we've got somebody here from the back, right there, and, um, we talked with some of them, they expressed their needs for additional space and for increased location compared here, and we're taking it up now, we're looking to see what space is available, and I know Ms. Miller's been working on the staff requirements and how much space they need around outside of the office, or somewhere in that area, there, so we will, I think the building committee's gonna research that, get back with you and show you what's possible, like, why aren't you, you and Buzz and Randy all that committee do with it.
I think too, we got a young lady in the back representing DHEC, I think y'all was wanting to try to, on a federal level, look and see whether there's some resources out there to help as well.
That's correct.
We're still busy, you know, looking into this, and I'm, uh, good to come.
Can you?
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I know you put seven thousand square foot, do you deal with anything any less than seven thousand?
Um, it would depend on how the configuration of the building is set up, so if it's an existing building that we've had to upfit for the purposes of what we do in the county health department, that would be difficult, um, if it's an empty building that we were able to design ourselves, potentially so, I, I certainly don't have an architectural background, I'm a nurse, so, um, I, I would hate to be the voice of that, but it's something that we can talk about.
Thank you, we've been working on this, looking into it, so, we're going down to number ten now, ordinance reading, third reading, in order to develop a joint county industrial business park in conjunction with Marlboro County, South Carolina, Stuarts R.C.A., section thirteen of South Carolina Constitution, and the South Carolina Total Laws of nineteen seventy-six, uh, forward dash one dash one seventy, it's secret, as a meaning to provide for a limited agreement with Marlboro County to develop a park and otherwise related to that, so we have a motion. Just be one percent, Clay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, can I make just one comment about that, I think, yeah, this is third reading, fine, and, and Mr. Scott Zacharite, it clearly says on page three A, and I don't expect you've got it in page three A, it does on there, it says that Dillon County be ninety-nine percent, Marlboro County one percent, and we'll deal with technically the properties out there, and where the hard-fuck retail property is, and where project supposedly beacon is gonna go, if they go at all, so it'd be, it's still a ninety-nine, one percent deal, so it's just, it's, uh, it's, uh, that's just required, ninety-nine, one percent's required by the thing we're agreeing is required.
Is there a motion, uh, of the third reading?
Make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Is it so?
I say.
Any more discussion? Only favor raised right hand. Okay, and we're down to the third reading, in order for installment payments of real property type, that requires a motion.
I already got motion, do we just send that?
We got a motion, is it so?
Second.
Is it so, any discussion? Only favor raised right hand. Okay, now we're down to number eleven, appointment, Dillon County Board of Zonin, out of field, District One Randy Goins has a appointment. District Six Robert Calvert. Okay. We're down to number twelve, legislation and session legally advised regarding accommodation tax and economic and contracting matter, willing to go this, I saw Tony's not here.
No, I, I, since he's, since he's not.
Tony called right before the meeting, he was.
He's not, he's not feeling well today, and I just, I'd rather wait and let him be here.
Okay. Do we have a motion, is it John?
Don't move.
Is it so?
Second.
Oh, boy, you're there, I got two of my constituents here, this, this time I seen them here, I just wanted to acknowledge you and tell you.
Stand up, Mr. Randy.
Stand up!
Stand up.
I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name is Nexa, I'm from, I live in Newtown. I'm Bryce Curry, and I also live in Newtown.
This is my daughter.
Hi.
Good to see you, ladies. Sheriff, on the four years journey, I would like for us to have a resolution or something for the academic team in Lakeview, one or two years in a row, now we're pretty good at sports, and now we're getting a lot better in academics, so.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, we good.
I second that, we get, uh, them two to write it, just like you want.
Alan, Jameson, Alan, I should like that, Alan Berry.
Get Alan Berry to.
We'll do that, we'll do that, Bobby, we'll take you there.
Only favor, the resolution, uh, the motion that made, is it so? Only favor, raise your right hand.
I got one more, Mr. Chairman. I want us to vote on the, that's the, the, write a letter to the trade master about, about things I'm looking at, that we have any other taxes.
Is that in order?
Well, let me, let me look and see, see what the legality is of it first, let me, let Alan Berry look at that, let Alan, let Alan research that first, let him make a recommendation.
Well, you just give her something saying she's even covering up, that's all I got.
I'll ask Alan Berry to look into it, see what, see what.
Okay, let's see, we have a motion, is it John?
Don't move.
Is it so?
I say.
Only favor raised right hand.